Workshop, workshop item A, discussion regarding Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation action items.
Can you move the PowerPoint because it didn't get put in here?
Okay. So she's not ready to... She needs to...
I saw it.
Another one here.
Hey, can you get Delina? I think she's out there.
She'll be forever.
Oh, Jeff's coming.
I figured you were in for a heavy duty. Yeah. I would suggest that that'd be the last. He did a super job. He was out there. I tell you what, though. That organization of that, between that on the west side and Boo and the Zoo, there are many few people out there now looking for trick-or-treating and it's a lot safer for the kids. I think it's...
Mayor, she's getting the PowerPoint. She'll be just a couple minutes, so apologies. On her way.
Three seconds.
And he's going to be coming right up. Are we having to quickly have him in to check it?
Mayor, Commission, my name is Delina Barrera. I'm the Director of the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation. Again, today we have three different items for consideration from the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation. It's the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation Service Agreement, the Brownsville Sports Park Maintenance Agreement, and an amendment to the bylaws. Again, the service agreement contract, historically we've had this contract in place since the inception, and in essence it's just to provide the administrative services to the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation, which includes such things as managing the funding applications and contracts, coordinating board meetings, minutes, financial services, legal services, and if you recollect from the budget meeting, they've also added the E-CIVIS, which is a web-based grant service. Again, from August 2002 to July 2003, the contract was for $100,000. From 2003 to 2004, it was for $200,000. From 2004 to 2005, it was $200,000. At that point in time, the Board did review the possibility of privatization, but decided to continue to contract with City of Brownsville Services. From October 2005 to September, it's been $250,000. From 2007 to fiscal year 2011, it has continued at $250,000. This fiscal year, again, the Board has reviewed organizational structure and possible privatization option. What they are looking at and what change there is from the contract is to make it easier if the Board wants to make changes to the contract. It could allow partial to full privatization if so allowed. Again, there's always been a provision in the contract to allow that. It's what the attorney has done is just to ease that process in case they choose to do so. And as I mentioned earlier, for fiscal year 2012, the Board also approved an additional $30,100 for E-CIVIS. As far as the sports park maintenance agreement, again, this tends to cover the field turf maintenance, general ground and restroom maintenance, rental maintenance, tournament event recruitment that attracts out-of-town overnight guests. Again, on this particular contract, it's been in existence since, again, before the park opened in August 2008 to start trying to get a structure in place for maintaining the park. It was $400,000 initially. From October 2009 to September 2010, it was $794,000. And then October 2010 to 2011, it was $550,000. Again, the reduced amount had to do with the projected revenues that the park had received, and so then placing those revenues back into that account then accounts for the difference there. For this year, at this point in time, as far as the budget is concerned, the Board has approved $550,000 under that particular contract, again, less the projected revenues. Excuse me. As the same as in the other agreement, what the change that has occurred to the maintenance agreement is also to just allow more flexibility for the Board to be able to make changes or amendments to the contract if necessary. Although, again, that provision had been there in the past, it just eases the process if need be. The third item that is up for action that BCIC has on the agenda is an amendment to the bylaws. What the Board is requesting is a change in the number of elected officials. Back in August of 2009, the BCIC Board did request a change from four to three, and that was approved by the City Commission back in August 25th of 2009. This year, they're asking for a recommendation to change the number of directors that may also be elected officials from three to two. Again, pretty much the same reasoning as before is to try to provide a more broad-based community participation in differing points of view, and to provide a little bit more, at least prima facie, independence for recommendations to the City Commission. So again, this is a part of the existing bylaws, and it would just change the number of elected officials from three to two. The state law does provide up to four, which, as you can see previously, that's what it was back in, prior to the change in August of 2009. Questions?
Just to comment on what Dr. Barrera has said, the current Board is trying very hard to look at the structure of the 4B Corporation and see whether or not we're working at the most efficient level possible so that we can provide as much funding as possible to multiple projects, not just one project. Part of that is looking at the sports park contract because it is so expensive, and making sure that that is being run as efficient as possible in terms of reducing the overhead as much as possible. So we've been going back and forth with different options and different structures, and in order to do the due diligence correctly, we amended, we are attempting to amend the bylaws so that we can provide that funding for the city on a monthly basis as opposed to a yearly basis. In case we decide that we do want to make a change, we'll have the ability to do that. In keeping with that efficiency and improving accountability, we don't, we do very strongly feel that there should be no more than two city commissioners on that Board for obvious reasons. If the Board is a mirror of the City Commission, then it can't function in an independent, objective, as objective a way as it might need to be, as it should be. So that's what's behind these changes, just to let you know.
Can I ask, what options are being reviewed?
Well, currently, sure. Currently, the sports park is owned by 4B, but is really under the Parks and Rec Department. But a lot of this happens because it's not really a City of Brownsville property, it's a 4B property. And so there does develop some room for confusion of who is accountable to whom, and so on and so forth. So we are looking at whether or not the sports park should be owned by the City of Brownsville, either sold, leased, in some shape or fashion, and we don't know the right mix yet, but it really should be within the City of Brownsville and not a 4B entity. The second piece of that is the staff of 4B, namely Dr. Barrera and her assistants, are employed technically by the City of Brownsville, yet 4B reimburses the city for their salaries and their benefits and such, that there is another piece of confusion there because they're not directly answerable to the Board for those reasons. So we're looking at whether or not to privatize their positions and make them direct employees of 4B as opposed to indirect employees of 4B because they're employees of the city.
And again, this is just for my own edification. Who is the one that determines what purpose that sports park can be used for? I understand, and I'm sure that the city administration has dealt with this, but there was a fundraising effort for cancer victims, and I know that some issues were brought to my attention, but I don't, you know, and I told them, I said, I think it goes back to the city, but, you know, are you all dealing with that so that makes sure that...
Right. The sports park manager, superintendent, I guess is the term that I'm searching for, is an employee of the City of Brownsville and under the Director of Parks and Rec. And that's not a direct line to 4B, yet 4B owns the property. Do you follow what I'm saying?
No, I do.
And so we're trying to straighten that out.
To answer the question, Mayor, under the current contract, that would be a call for the City of Brownsville. So under the current contract, the City of Brownsville would have, would make that call accordingly.
And I'm assuming that because of the inquiry, it came to me and I directed him over, I think, to the city manager's office that everything's been taken care of, and I thank you for that. But I think that the least amount of confusion and the more organization we have so that we don't make discretionary calls, somebody says, well, you know, you let so-and-so use it, and they, you know, what's the difference between that one and me? And then someone says, you know, you had so much security, but you didn't enforce that on someone else. It is lacking a little bit of uniformity as far as I can tell.
And legal will be, I'm sorry.
Anytime those types of questions or issues do come to my attention, I direct them to the City of Brownsville to address those issues because that is under their purview.
Legal will be presenting to us, will actually be forming a committee to be looking at the pros and cons of the different ways to do it, and will be presenting to us every month in the next few months.
Mayor, under my chairmanship, a lot of these guidelines were established. In essence, what we charge at the park, the contract that we have with PD, the main problem with everybody, especially like this event that's coming up, has been security. And we have a contract with Brownsville PD, with the union, and where they provide security for when anybody's using a public facility. And therefore, they develop the hour stats. In essence, a lot of the things that have come up to our city manager has been, you know, we're paying almost $4,000 for security, you know, and the event is trying to raise money, but yet, you know, $3,700 to $4,000 is going just on security. But that is a contract in essence that we have, and I know that management in the past has dealt with it as far as the timetable in which the officers are there, and maybe that's something that some organizations maybe have not understood, you know, the actual hours that are used. But in essence, the fee to use the park, the fee for the facility is basically standard the same. A lot of the problems that we've encountered, a lot of the times, has been basically because of security issues. And in other words, we need security out there, but the amount that is requested, that's a lot of the time what, you know, what ends up coming up with that.
Yeah, and I think the question I would have, Mr. Commissioner, is that is there a uniform standard? In other words, does everybody, in other words, if you have X amount of people, you're going to have to have X amount of security people? I think those are the things that were brought to my attention, and I couldn't actually pinpoint a regulation or a...
Well, I received a phone call from one of the individuals organizing this particular event that's coming up, and my answer to him was, I said, "You're promoting a free event." And I said, "Do you know the amount of people you're going to have out there? Therefore, you must have the adequate security."
That's right.
You know, I said, "So we can't cut corners when you're promoting." If you were to say, "I'm charging $50 a head, $100 a head for people to come into the park," you've established, you know...
The parameter.
Pretty much, you're going to have, you know, anywhere between 1,000 to 3,000 people. You could basically figure out security. When you've got a free event, it's a free-for-all, you know, and...
The contract with the Police Officers Association mandates that our officers will work security at every city-owned location. So thus, police will work security at parks if we have an event. And then, based on the event, the police officers and their team that provides the security identify the need and how many security officers are going to be there. Now, if the person that is working on the event works out in agreement with the police officers, in this case, we want to have some of our officers there from other entities, and the police officers basically have to agree to that. And there could be a mixture, however, they're not going to agree to reduce police and pay other entities.
Sure. And I understand what I'm kind of getting at, and I think exactly, Commissioner, what you're talking about. What happens if they do promote a free event? How do you calculate how many people are going to be there? That seems to be the question...
And that's what I'm trying to explain, is that these questions obviously do need to be in the city manager office direction. The 4B Board does not need to sit there and calculate, okay, well, there are these many people and we need this many security, because that's not the purpose of a 4B Board. The purpose of the Board is to fund quality of life issues, not to determine if the head count and the security count match. And so that's what we're trying to standardize.
One more comment. Also, when I was a member of the 4B, there was talk about wanting to privatize the 4B. Now, 4B has a lot of pros in the contract that it currently has with the city. If it independent, if it goes independent from the city, there are costs that are going to be incurred by the 4B.
That's what the purpose legal providing us the due diligence is for, because those pros and cons haven't been looked at for, since its inception, many years ago.
No, they've been looked at. It's...
Well, they've never been given to the current 4B Board. Never.
Okay. Well, I think this is a healthy discussion, to be honest with you, because I truly believe that there are some issues out here that the more we talk about it and the more we bring them to the front, we're able to address them and see how best we can serve the community. Okay? So thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that's, what's next?
Calling to...
Okay, Stella, was it time? Is it 5:30?
Yes.
Do we have two minutes?
Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5 of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of Said City, will convene a workshop, an executive session, and a regular session on Tuesday, November 1st, 2011, at 5:10 PM, 5:30 PM, and 6:00 PM in the Commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Executive session, item A, discussion pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding real property. An executive session, item B, discussion pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code in connection with pending litigation styled and numbered BFFA Local Number 970 versus Brownsville Cause Number 2011-DCL-5738-E.
Mayor, I move you go into executive session?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Please rise. Pledge allegiance, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and
Reverend Michael Aaron, would you please lead us in prayer?
Thank you. Let us bow in prayer. Gracious God, we give you thanks for this beautiful day that you have given us, and for the opportunity to live in a land of freedom. We remember tonight those men and women who are overseas protecting our rights and doing the job that we have asked them to do. And tonight, Lord God, we ask your blessing upon this time, that you would guide and direct all the thoughts and all the actions of this council, and that together, Lord, we would work for the good of our community and for our world. We pray this in your most holy name. Amen.
Item number A.
Item A, action on that, item discuss an executive session, consideration and action on executive session item as advised by legal counsel in executive session.
It's on the Quito Building.
Yes. Mayor, what you discuss in executive session is for the acquisition of the Quito Building?
Correct. Does that hear your motion?
Mayor, at the, after being briefed in executive session and not wanting to divulge any pertinent information that might be linked as to a property acquisition agreement, I'll, at this moment, with later on, hopefully, an explanation as to what was executed to the community so that they can understand that the Commission acted in very good faith as to the future of the downtown revitalization project, I move that we approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor's report.
Okay, the mayor's report. I think the only thing that we put down here, Stella, is hopefully with the, everybody acquiescing, the December 6 meeting, I have to be attending out of town, so I was hoping that cancellation unless someone has any objections.
Will there be any, Ben Medina?
Ben is sitting on the far row.
I'm sorry. Blind sided. Will there be, how many meetings, official meetings will we be having in December? Stella?
One.
One? Is this going to affect in any way, any items in reference to, with...
No, Commissioner Nogoria, we have a PNZ meeting next week, I mean, this Thursday, and they'll come at the first meeting and the last, the second meeting in November. So the next meeting of the PNZ is that first Thursday of December, we'll just have to move it to...
My only concern is, was PNZ? That we wouldn't leave anybody holding...
We can make adjustments to the advertisement so it can...
Yeah, we'll do that.
We can reflect the meeting on the 13th, Stella.
Yes, there's plenty of time.
And if for some reason there needs to be an emergency meeting, we can always call them. Okay? Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you very much. Commissioners' reports? Jessica?
This is my first official update. I haven't made any updates on my district because, well, I just wanted to get more familiarized with the process and things that we were doing before mentioning anything. Before I do want to start, the American Legion Post Number 43 is here today. I did lose my grandfather this last week, who was an American ex-prisoner of war, and he was a very, very, very good guy who, you know, is a longtime Brownsville resident, who supported everything that Brownsville did, and was a true believer in Brownsville, which is one of the reasons why I'm here. And the American Legion, John Hanson Legion, did perform the services in a beautiful ceremony for him, so I'd like for them to stand and just recognize them for the amazing things they do for us. Our veterans are probably one of the most important people that exist in our country, and, you know, I am very glad that you guys are taking good care of them all the way to the end. Aside from that, on my district, I would like to mention that we have had several things going on. Our airport, for one, is one of the largest things in our district, which we've been focusing a lot, a lot, a lot of work into. We currently have a dual customs project that slowly but surely is coming around that would change the face of not only the city, but of the valley if we are able to bring this to our airport. We would create hundreds of jobs. Not only that, I believe every time a plane lands in our city, there's a fee that we would collect. And our city manager, Charlie Kabler, and Mr. Larry Brown, I don't think, Larry, Larry, you're here? Larry Brown has been working very, very, very hard to make sure that we get this. And I'm very proud of our airport. We just received $1 million from the Department of Transportation to build another hangar. And we currently have tons and tons and tons of projects, over 20, I think, not tons, sorry, over 20 projects going on at our airport, and they're doing a great job. We hope to soon be, you know, a shining star in the valley for the things that we're doing differently from other cities. We do have a very good team out there, and they're working very hard. Aside from that, we have some drainage, some drainage progress going on on Guyan Drive, which would affect over 2,000 families out there that deal with these drainage issues. I know there's a lot of flooding and whatnot, and the City of Brownsville is very adamant that we're working on our drainage to keep these families safe from the water. What else do we have going on? Let's see. We've been working on a lot of the potholes and whatnot. Any issues that you guys have, please email me on my email. It's jtetro@cob.us, C-O-B dot U-S. And, hmm, anything else that you guys need, please contact me. We're working very hard, very hard. We want to get our district up to par. We want to get this dual customs project rolling. We want to fill our warehouses. We want to create jobs that are not just minimum wage jobs. We want to provide for your families. We want to bring these options to you, and we want to stay... We want to bring these options to you, and we want to stay strong. So with that, if you come done, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. The next are proclamations. Is that correct, Stella?
Yes, your Homeless Awareness Month.
Okay. Who has the proclamation?
Is anyone present here for the Homeless Awareness Month?
Could you state your name?
Sure. My name is Abel Maldalis, and I'm the chairperson of the Cameron County Homeless Coalition. And...
We'd like to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. The following is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, declaring November 2011 to be Homeless Awareness Month in our city. And whereas the winter poses extreme hardship for unsheltered and inadequately housed, low-income men, women, and children in the city of Brownsville. And whereas any given night in the city, there are more than 100 homeless men, women, and children sleeping in their cars, on the streets, and other locations not meant for human habitation. And whereas the spirit of the holiday season of giving provides an opportunity for affirmation and renewal regarding the commitment to end homelessness. And whereas in this season of generosity and sharing, citizens of Brownsville are encouraged to commit themselves to promoting compassion and concern for all brothers and sisters, especially those who are poor and homeless. And whereas the Bishop Enrique San Pedro Ozenam Center in Brownsville is responsible for coordinated community response to address the issues of the homelessness. And whereas the homeless prevention program serves our community to address the immediate needs of homeless individuals and families. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby declare November 2011 to be Homeless Awareness Month, and further encourage all our citizens to support all local efforts to eliminate homelessness in our community. And it's done this first day of November 2011, signed by Antonio Tony Martinez, Jr., Mayor of Brownsville, and the City Commission. Thank you, sir.
Again, for the city of Brownsville, the Ozenam Center is a primary shelter for the homeless, but there's also ancillary support services, which are the Good Neighbor Settlement House, the Friendship of Women, and others. And again, Mr. Maldenaw couldn't be here. Victor Maldenaw, the executive director of the Ozenam Center, and as the chairperson of the county committee, I told him, well, I could be here in his stead. And again, I appreciate the support of the city. It's been an ongoing participation. We work on joint projects. We do applications. We're looking for multi-funding all the time. But again, I think it's important to acknowledge that because of the uncertainty of the economy today, and also the foreclosure issues that are forthcoming and will continue, we just see a new client of homelessness. It's not the traditional client that we all anticipated. They are families now, and unfortunately, the greatest amount of individuals in our last count were families with children. So it exists. It's here, and we're trying to address it, and with your assistance, we'll continue to do so. Thank you.
Well, thank you for all your efforts. Appreciate it very much.
The next proclamation is Dodavi Jewel Avila.
Dodavi, put... Yeah, put that wonderful trophy up there. Okay? Why don't you face the audience, and I'm going to read the proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, congratulating Dodavi Jewel Avila on her championship chess performance. Whereas Dodavi Jewel Davila, daughter of David and Rosalba Avila, is an eighth-grade student at Encarnated Word Academy in Brownsville. And whereas on October 15, 2011, Dodavi Jewel Avila participated in the Texas Girls Scholastic Chess Championship in Corpus Christi and emerged as middle school section champion for 2011. And whereas Dodavi Jewel Avila, coached by David Avila, also participated in the International Youth Chess Championship in Las Vegas, Nevada, and also placed first in the National Open Scholastic Section, U-1200, coming in first. And whereas Dodavi Jewel Avila also placed first in the International Youth Blitz Championships, U-1100, and third in the International Youth Championships, U-1200. And whereas Dodavi Jewel Avila thus joins the ranks of youthful Brownsville chess competitors who have made their mark in the national international chess arena. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby congratulate Dodavi Jewel Avila on her winning chess performance and further wish her equal success on the chessboard in the years to come. Done this first day of November 2011, Antonio Tony Martinez, Mayor, and Commissioners. Rosalba, do you want to take a picture with your mom... With your... When I tell you I know him personally, I know him personally, okay? Great family.
I would like to thank Mr. Tony Martinez, the City Commissioners, my school, Encarnated Word Academy, and all of my sponsors for helping me out in this journey. Thank you for giving me this great honor. I know my family, teachers, and friends are proud of me. I am proud of myself, too. I've been playing chess basically my whole life. I've won so many awards, but by far, this is the most significant and most valuable award I've ever got. I will always remember this moment for the rest of my life. I hope to continue to play in chess and representing Brownsville as a student of Encarnated Word Academy at Brownsville, Texas. Thank you.
That's wonderful. I want to congratulate the entire family and the entire family of Encarnated Word. Sister, great, great work. You, too.
Next proclamation is Tip of Texas Region Winners of the Texas Great Debate.
Okay, this is gonna probably take all of them to come up here. I want all of you come up here. Bring the trophy over here, too. We want to see it.
That's a big one.
That's a big trophy.
This is a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing the Tip of Texas Region winners in the National Hispanic Institute Texas Great Debate. Whereas on June 9 through the 12th, 2011, at Austin College in Sherman, Texas, 37 students representing four area schools, St. Joseph Academy, Homer Hannah High School, Veterans Memorial High School, and Mid High in Mercedes, finished first in statewide competition. And whereas competing in categories of extemporaneous speaking, cross-examination, mock trial, and oratory, the Tip of Texas Region outpointed competitors from Austin, El Paso, the Upper Rio Grande Valley, San Antonio, Corpus Christi, Laredo, Houston, and Dallas. And whereas for the youthful competitors, it marked the third first-place finish in the last 11 years, and it signaled a revival of local participation in the National Hispanic Institute's Texas Great Debate. And whereas St. Joseph Academy was represented by 33 students, Veterans Memorial High School by two students, and Hannah High School and Mid High in Mercedes by one student each, and were guided in their winning efforts by project administrator Tino Villarreal of St. Joseph Academy, and assistants Mike Evans of San Benito High School and Kevin Sanchez of Longoria Elementary School in Edinburgh. And whereas these students and administrators deserve recognition and commendation for their achievement and for their emergence as role models for their peers, now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize and congratulate the Tip of Texas Region first-place winners in the National Hispanic Institute's Great Texas Debate, and honor them for a job well done. Done this the first day of November 2011, Antonio Tony Martinez and the City Commissioners. I wanted to make sure that our community knew that we have great leaders in the making. They have shown and demonstrated the abilities of working together as a team, of looking for mentors within the community to seek out advice and help and guidance so that they can achieve their goals. This is just one example of what can be done by working together, and I want to commend them and give them special thanks for participating and being active members of the community and for reaching out and making sure that they seek out new members to participate in this great organization. And we want to also take this opportunity to encourage other students or other members of the community to seek out the group and to participate, because I believe Clarissa is looking for new recruits to train so that we can continue this tradition.
Congratulations. 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 Good job. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Yeah, that's really good.
On behalf of the Tip of Texas Young Leaders Conference, my name is Tino Villarreal. I'm the project administrator, and I wanted to thank the Commissioners and the Mayor for this. This is fantastic. As a matter of fact, this is the third time that we have won this as a region here from Brownsville. The first two times were in 2000 and 2001. As a matter of fact, 10 different regions participate in this for this particular trophy, and only four have ever taken the first prize trophy. And I'm proud to say that these young men and women really worked so hard, and they're one of the only four regions in the state of Texas to ever claim this trophy. And I know that with the strong core that we have, we're going to continue doing this for our community. We want to thank you. We want to invite other people always. We're looking for supporters. We want to thank... Our last thank you, I know you have a big agenda tonight. We want to thank Dr. Robles and Dr. Julia Garcia for opening the doors at the university for us to train there every weekend at no charge, and that really does help us every Sunday that we practice to know we have a home here at the university here in Brownsville. Thank you all very much once again.
Thank you. Item number five, Stella?
Item five, consent agenda items A through F. Would you approve?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda items passed.
Mayor, excuse my... We don't have an employee of the month?
No, sir. I'm sorry.
She's gonna postpone to the next meeting. She cannot be here.
We'll have it on the 50. Boards and Commissions, item six, consideration and action to appoint or reappoint 14 members to the Heritage Council.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Peter Goodman. I'm the historic Downtown District Director. I'm joined this evening by Joe Gavito, the Heritage Officer for the City of Brownsville, and will be happy to answer any questions you have about our dedicated members of the Heritage Council.
All we need is approval. I think Peter and Joe, I think these are all great appointees.
Mayor, I move to reappoint this lady.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Keep the good work going, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Joe.
Item seven, public hearing and action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 2011-1549 to provide the continuance of the opting out of the exemption for taxation of goods in transit pursuant to the recent amendments to the Texas Tax Code.
I don't... Mayor, members of the City Commission, on December 11, 2007, the City Commission approved Ordinance 2007-1482 whereby the city would be taxing goods in transit. During our last legislation, Senate Bill 20... Senate Bill 1 was approved by the Texas Legislature and signed by Governor Rick Barry, which requires taxing entities to reintroduce this item, whether or not we would tax the goods in transit. And this particular ordinance that's been before you tonight is... We'll tax the goods in transit. And again, this is a public hearing. This is our first reading.
It is a public hearing. Do we have Mr. Huestig? How are you?
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. The question is, I have Mr. Gonzalez, how many other cities have this already implemented this tax system?
My understanding, the majority of the counties tax goods in transit.
All of them?
In cities in Cameron County.
In Cameron County?
Or the taxing entities.
Okay, so each city can tax or just...
This allows the cities to tax goods that are intrinsic.
Intrinsic means just passing by, correct? Okay. As you know, that Matamoros is a sister city of Brownsville, and a lot of goods come through here from Mexico. And we have to look at how much will it affect them through this action. I know we need money, but you have to understand. They might think twice as they look at the numbers of money being collected. You have to understand that. Because if you look at... If we're gonna put a tax on their goods, cost goes up for everybody. At the end, somebody has to pay for this. Okay? That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Go ahead, Reverend.
I think most of us would just like to know how this is going to work. Does it mean everything going down our highway has to stop somewhere, get inspected and taxed? Or what does it mean taxing goods in service in transit? Or what does it mean taxing goods in service, in transit?
Well, according to the bill, it's, these are warehouses, in other words, if it's in a warehouse in transit, that's where it gets, you know, according to the, I'll go ahead and read it. According to the Property Tax Code, Section 11, 253, "Goods in transit are tangible personal property stored in public warehouses for the person who acquired or imported the property and which are transported to another location inside or outside Texas, not later than one hundred and seventy-five days after the property was acquired or imported." That's what this particular tax is all about.
Is there a rate attached to it or a value?
Well, again, they apply to each rate that each taxing entity's tax rate is. And that's what it is. I know that Cameron County also is taxing goods in transit, okay?
It just, I appreciate the explanation, but it just still seems kind of vague to most of us that are wondering how that's going to affect everything. I don't know.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Pete, can you assess a dollar figure to what we're talking about?
I tried to get this from the appraisal district because they are the ones that keep the information, the records, and they didn't have a number, but they, my understanding from the personnel at Cameron Appraisal District is that not too many companies apply for this exemption. So in other words, it's a very small amount. That's all I could gather from the appraisal district.
I seem to recall a figure from your budget presentation in the amount exceeding half a million dollars. What, is this in reference to the same thing? Or are we talking about something else?
No, this particular, like for instance, in 2007, there was a number that was presented to us, and it was, way back then, I believe it was a hundred and thirty, thirty million, I believe. Hundred and thirty thousand? No, thirty-five, thirty-five million, which that was considered a small amount, which would be around $245,000 that was taxable. That was in 2007. I just couldn't get a number for the latest 2011. But in 2007, the taxable amount based on thirty-five million was $245,214. In other words, that we were able to collect. And again, the more exemptions that we add to the property, that means that we're going to be collecting less in property taxes. So the number is around $200, $250,000. And again, I didn't get that number from the appraisal district.
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I mean, move to continue with an opt-in now.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number CL 2011-001 to allow a game arcade at 780 Central Boulevard, Suite 724.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, the applicant late this afternoon withdrew her application, so I ask this item to be tabled indefinitely.
Move to table?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number CL 2011-003 to allow a game arcade at 1775 Central Boulevard.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioner, this is a gaming arcade to be located here, and there is a map that we can show you. This is a public hearing. The police commander would like to also comment on this side.
I'm sorry, that's not the map.
Mayor, City Commissioners, we're opposed to any rezoning or any more arcades in the city. Basically, we believe them all to be, they're not legitimate. They're gambling, and it's a violation of state law. Since January 2, 2011, we've conducted sixteen raids on different establishments throughout the city. And if we had the time, there are more important things to be doing, we'd actually hit them off. So I entertain any questions from you all. I know we've been working really good with planning and the permits to address them as quickly as possible.
Commander?
Yeah?
We haven't had very many arcades come before the City Commission for approval in a while. Now, will you explain to me the difference between an arcade and those establishments that are popping up, like Wildfire, known as sweepstakes? What's the difference? Are we talking semantics?
We don't really consider them indifferent. We are working with the district attorney as far as developing a plan, so we're going to go ahead and address them. We believe they'll be fronted the same way as the other gambling. The way they get around it is they claim they're donating twenty-five percent of their gross to a charity, which is ridiculous. We're working, we're getting there, but again, we need support from the district attorney and other entities to proceed. And we will. We want them out of the city.
So do you recommend we revise or come up with a new ordinance to address this issue from the get-go instead of, you know, it seems like we're pushing the cart before the horse here.
I think if we develop, and the police department worked with legal, we could actually develop an easy ordinance that prior to even them coming up to you all, we have to do an inspection. That would eliminate the need for our probable cause investigations. These investigations are really timely. Just to do one arcade, for example, may take us a week and a half. Go undercover, go play the machines. A lot of times, they make us, so we, you know, we don't develop enough probable cause for a judge to sign off for the search warrant and seizure warrant. Having an ordinance to where we're in the loop at the very beginning would solve the problem, because we could determine very quickly that the machine is illegal and then seize it based off that. It totally eliminates the need for probable cause and the time amount spent just to investigate these. There's more important things in the city for us to be doing, addressing drugs on the street and issues like of that nature rather than gambling.
It seems several years ago, there was, didn't we pass a moratorium on gaming arcades for a time? Did that expire? Or what happened to that?
I think part of the problem is, we have this invention of these so-called sweepstakes machines, which basically are a loophole. They're not eight-liners technically under the statute. And the sweepstakes machines are currently legal under Texas state law as regulated by the state of Texas. So I think the previous ordinance referred to eight-liners and those arcades, but perhaps not the sweepstakes machines which are legal under the state.
So do we still have a moratorium on some other kind of gaming?
The, there was a moratorium until we defined an ordinance, and we did. And that's why these businesses are here before you based on our new ordinance, which they're here because they're within two hundred feet of a residential area or two hundred feet of a park or two hundred feet of a school or a church. In this particular case, they're right behind, right behind them is the Public Housing Authority. So they're right abutting housing. So that's why they need the special permit from you, and they're asking, please approve my special permit so I can be located at this facility.
But if I understand the Commander correctly, you'd prefer that we not.
That's correct.
And that we do need work on a new ordinance.
And we'd like to be part of that with legal as far as developing it, just making it very simple to where we, we're at the very beginning of the process, where we don't even bother the Commissioner's time and the City of Brownsville's time. That would shut them down very quick.
And I'd be happy to work with PD on that. And of course, we've got to make sure we do everything legally and correctly, particularly because this is an area that's regulated by the state of Texas. And under state law, the sweepstakes machines are currently legal. So, but yes, I'd like to sit down with the PD, and we can take another look at the ordinance to make sure it's done correctly.
And we're getting close on the sweepstakes. I think there's several cities that are making some headway, and hopefully we'll follow suit and get them out of here also.
I, you know, we'll take a vote on this one, but I've got a feeling by the nodding of the heads that everybody would like for you to do that, Mr. Attorney.
Well, it just frustrates me, Mayor, that we established a moratorium, and we've done this before, and then somehow it gets lifted without City Commission approval, when it takes City Commission approval to establish a moratorium.
Let me tell you, I'm behind you. I totally agree with what you're saying. Anyway, this is a public hearing. Is anybody else? I think there's someone behind you, Mr. Udesti.
First of all, I'd like to ask Ben, are there any other, I hate to say this, arcades or sweepstakes buildings on Central Boulevard?
Not that I know of at this time.
As you know, Commissioners and Mayor, a lot of people that go there, and are old people, okay? They're the ones that're spending the money. Maybe they can't go to the Bengals. They have eight-liners, I think they call them one-armed bandits, I think. That's what they call them in the Army. I don't go to any of this stuff because it's not my interest. But a lot of people think that that's the only way they can get some money in this bad era, but they're thinking wrong because they're spending their hard-earned money, their welfare checks, whatever they get, and dumping it there. As far as putting it there on this street, I think sometimes we prosecute the elderly. It's, anybody has a right to have anything. Sometimes I look at the Bengals, they have one-armed bandits in there too, and, but they're called Bengals, so they're legal. I think they are legal. And sweepstakes now come out to be legal because of the names. Arcades are not. So it looks like everybody's going to just change the names to sweepstakes, and they'll come back up here. And like the attorney and Melissa said, a new ordinance needs to be provided in order to protect not only the owners, but also the people that go in there, because it seems like they arrest everybody. And I know they do. I hate to arrest a ninety-year-old lady there because she's throwing her money down there. But it needs to be some sort of protection. Am I opposed to this? I'll say yes, because I think something else could be better built for something else. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Reverend. I think the Reverend, Ben, I think we still have, Ben?
It's the first time I've been up here twice in one meeting, but this becomes addictive to so many people, the whole idea of gambling. I lived in Omaha, Nebraska for a while when gambling came in. Across the river in Iowa, bank robberies doubled that next year. And when they interviewed the people that they caught, half of them were trying to pay their gambling debts. The other half were drug addicts. And it just, the addiction is really extreme for some people. Years ago, I had a roommate that was addicted to it. And I felt bad for the poor guy, but I couldn't do anything with him. It just really, when it's that available, that it's on every street, and they don't have to go to Louisiana to make it happen, it destroys a lot of families. Suicide rate also went up in Omaha. One lady, her family didn't know they were about to lose their house. And on the day they were going to foreclose and throw them out, she drove to her regular grocery store and shot herself there in the car. The addiction that happens with it destroys a lot of families. And so anything you can do to legally eliminate it, I'm all for.
Thank you, Reverend. Okay, any more public? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing closed. Now, action item?
Move to deny? Is that an action?
That sounds good to me.
Second.
All those in favor to deny? Is that item number nine? To allow a game arcade at 1775 Central Boulevard? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Please note that Commissioner Rick Longoria is, did you abstain or did you just vote?
Nay.
Nay, okay. But the action carries, and it will not be allowed, okay?
Thirty-three dash S to allow professional office childcare learning center in a dwelling G classification, block four, block twelve of Bay of Vista, third edition, located at 2224 East Taylor Street.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this is the property shaded in red. And here, the applicant would like to have a daycare center. The planning and zoning commission would unanimously to approve this application to you. So this is a public hearing.
Okay. Any comment? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, hearing is closed. Action item?
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eleven, public comment. Mike?
Number twelve, Estella?
Item twelve, consideration in action to authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the Texas Division of Emergency Management Fiscal Year Twenty-Eleven Emergency Management Performance Grant awarded to the Brownsville Office of Emergency Management and Homeland Security in the amount of fifty thousand three hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-five cents.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, the EMPG grant is a reimbursement grant from FEMA to the State of Texas, and then there's a pass-through to the City of Brownsville. Brownsville's one of very few jurisdictions in the Rio Grande Valley that actually qualifies for and participates in the EMPG program. The difference between the EMPG program and most federal programs that are distributed through FEMA is it's funded separately. EMPG is defined in many, in many circles as the backbone of emergency management in the United States, and as such, it's funded separately from the primary funding source for FEMA. What that means to us at the local level is that it typically gets put on the back burner on the federal level and gets funded very late in season, if you will. And so what you have before you is acceptance of the EMPG grant for the City of Brownsville for the year that just concluded a few days ago. Um, and we have just received this information recently, but we obviously request your approval on this item.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Jeff.
Item thirteen, consideration in action on Resolution Number Twenty-Eleven dash zero sixty-seven of the City of Brownsville, Texas, adopting the fund balance policy in accordance with Statement Fifty-four of the Governmental Accounting Standard Board and resolving other matters thereof.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Commission, this is a, uh, a fund bal- fund balance policy that's, uh, in accordance with Statement Number Fifty-four, and that's from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or otherwise called GASBIE. Uh, the policy, this policy will ensure that the city will maintain adequate fund balances and reserves in order to provide sufficient cash flow for daily financial needs, secure and maintain in place investment-grade bond ratings, overset significant economic downturns or revenue shortfalls, and provide funds for unforeseen expenditures related to, to emergencies. Uh, this policy is only for governmental funds, such as the General Fund, Special Revenue Funds, Debt Service Funds, Capital Project Funds, and Permanent Funds. It does not include the Enterprise Funds. This is a, more or less, what our fund balance would normally look on top. This is the way we've been classifying fund balances, uh, prior to Twenty-Ten, and this is an example that, uh, that we used, uh, for Twenty-Ten. We had a fund balance at the end of the fiscal year of fifteen million seventy-nine thousand five seventy-four. The only items that were included as part of the fund balance were the reserves and the unreserve. Um, the, uh, reserve fund balance last year, Twenty-Ten, was two million three twenty-six six eighty-six, and the unreserve fund balance was twelve million seven fifty-two eight eighty-eight. Well, with new, with this new GASBIE Fifty-four, there's going to be, um, more components, or five components to the fund balance, and that's non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. And when we do our, our audit for Twenty-Eleven, that's how some of these, uh, fund balance categories will be included in our fund balance. Uh, and the city's financial statements for governmental funds, again, will, will include five components, the, uh, the non-spendable, the restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. Uh, non-spendable means that it is not expected to be converted to cash, examples, or inventories, prepaid items, long-term loans, and notes receivable. Restricted includes amounts that can be spent only for specific purposes that are imposed by creditors, granters, contributors, or laws and regulations of other governments, limitations imposed by law through constitutional provisions or enabling legislation. That's, that's what we're gonna re, uh, classify restricted fund balance. Committed includes amounts that can only be used for specific purposes determined by formal action of the city's highest level of decision, in this case, the City Commission. Assigned includes amounts that can be used for specific purposes that do not meet the criteria to be, to be classified as restricted or committed. Uh, and again, the city, in this case, the City Commission delegates the Chief Financial Officer the authority to assign amounts to be used for s- specific purposes. And some of this would be pos- possibly the encumbrances that are at the end of the fiscal year. Unassigned is the total fund balance in the General Fund in excess of the non-spendable, restricted, committed, and assigned. Uh, the city, and then, we're coming up with a, with a, a policy uh, that the, the city will maintain a minimum, minimum unassigned fund balance in its General Fund, ranging from fifteen to eighteen percent of the subsequent year's expenditures and outgoing transfers. The minimum fund balance, again, is to protect against cash flow short forward falls related to timing of projected revenue receipts and to maintain a balanced budget commitment. When the fund balance in the General Fund falls below the minimum fifteen percent range, the city will replenish the shortages using the following strategies. The city will reduce, uh, recurrent expenditures to eliminate any deficit, or the city will increase revenues or pursue other funding sources, or a combination of the two options. When the fund balance in the General Fund falls below the fifteen percent range, the city will u- will use the following timeframe. Uh, deficiencies resulting in a minimum fund balance between twelve and a half and fifteen percent shall be replenished over a period not to exceed one year. Deficiencies resulting in a minimum fund balance between ten and twelve and a half percent shall be replenished over a period not to exceed three years. And then deficiencies resulting in a minimum of fund balance of less than twelve percent, uh, that would be replenished over a period of five years. Should unassigned fund balance of the General Fund ever exceed the maximum of eighteen percent, then the city will, will consider such fund balance services for one-time expenditures that are non-recurring in nature. Uh, this is a, a summary of the fund balance, uh, through Twenty-Ten, when we were classifying it as reserve and unreserve. And then the last two column shows the, um, the percentage of the, uh, reserves in, in the expenditure side, which is the last column. Uh, the last few years, the, the city has exceeded, uh, the, the fifty percent range uh, for all those years except, uh, Tw- Twenty Zero Two. The, uh, the new classification, we go back and, and reclassify some of this, uh, and we'll classify some of this as assigned and unassigned. Uh, assigned, again, is money that can be spent that has not been restricted, uh, committed, uh, or otherwise. Right now, in Twenty-Eleven, uh, and again, these are all estimates, because, uh, we're still working with the end-of-the-year numbers, but the, uh, the latest numbers that we have right now, uh, the, uh, if we were, we were to follow this, this particular method, we would have, uh, our balance would, would drop uh, from the sixteen point six-three percent that we had previously to thirteen thirty-five percent. That's based on a fund balance of twelve million six forty-six three eighty-four. Um, uh, this, 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 and this is another, same symbol, on thirteen thirty-five percent. And that's what this policy is, is for, and we're recommending that, that this policy be adopted by, by the City Commission. Again, it's, it's just to make sure that we keep enough reserves and we maintain our, our, our credit rating that, that we have right now. Uh, within the next couple of weeks, we will, hopefully, the, the market is getting better. We will be able to refund some of the old bonds, and we'll have a conference call with some of our rating agencies. If any of you would want to participate in some of these, uh, meetings or conference calls that we have with the rating agencies within the next few weeks, we'll let you know when that time comes, because my understanding is that we'll be able to refund some of the old bonds because of the interest rates that we have right now and consequently save on, on the long, long end. Again, yeah, this is a policy that we want to introduce to you tonight. Now, normally, th- this is what most cities do. Uh, they require at least a sixty, sixty-day reserve, which is around fourteen and a half percent in our case.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll give it to him.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Congratulations, Pete. Motion passes.
Item fourteen, consideration in action to adopt budget amendment on Resolution Number Twenty-Eleven dash zero six-eight to amend the General Fund and the Landfill Tipping Fee Increase Fund budgets.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Commission, these are, uh, two items that we're asking for you to approve tonight. One is for traffic control devices in the neighborhood around eighty thousand. And we also have, uh, from the Landfill Tipping Fee Fund, uh, professional services, uh, for SC engineers for six hundred and fifteen thousand thirty dollars. My understanding is this contract has already been approved. The only thing that we need is the funding. And with this action tonight, we will have, uh, monies allocated for this particular expenditure for the fiscal year Twenty-Twelve. That's the six hundred and fifteen thousand thirty dollars. And again, we're, my understanding is that the Traffic Department wants to place a traffic, uh, uh, signal on, on the intersection of-
Seventh and Harrison.
Seventh and Harrison, or the courthouses, federal courthouses.
Okay. Very good. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item fifteen, consideration in action to authorize the city manager to execute the service agreement with the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation for fiscal year Twenty-Twelve.
Honorable Mayor, City Commission, this is one of the items that I discussed earlier in the workshop regarding the service agreement with the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation in the City of Brownsville for administrative services for the corporation.
This is, we had a workshop earlier?
Yes, motion to approve. Second.
I got a, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Delina.
Item number sixteen, consideration in action to authorize the city manager to execute the Brownsville Sports Park Maintenance Agreement with the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation for fiscal year Twenty-Twelve.
This is the other item with the contract with the City of Brownsville and Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation in regards to the Sports Park Maintenance Agreement.
I have a question.
What's that?
I have a question.
Sure.
I was reading this, and I, and I read that a city employee will continue to be responsible for the park's maintenance, et cetera. Will you explain to me what role our Parks and Rec Director will have in that? In, considering that he is responsible for all our parks, does he have a managerial role when it comes to the maintenance of our sports park?
In essence, when we're looking at the contract, the contract is with the City of Brownsville. So then it would be the City of Brownsville who would determine as far as the organizational structure in regards to, um, who reports to who within the structure.
Commissioner, let me, uh-
Does that-
Would you, would you please-
The answer to your question is that the superintendent does report to Mr. Patterson.
Right.
That's what I wanted to, thank you very much, Commissioner.
But what we missed in the workshop was that we, as a board, are looking at the pros and cons of changing some of those structures. And so the next item that deals with the bylaws allows us to do that on a month-to-month basis so that we can do that due diligence.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioners. Okay, so this, um, do I hear a, a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item seventeen, consideration in action to amend the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation's bylaws.
Again, this is, uh, a request by the BCIC Board to reduce the number of elected officials that would be eligible to be a BCIC Board Director from three to two.
Okay, I have another question, and I apologize for missing the workshop.
No problem.
Um, but are there any other major differences between this contract and our previous contract as far as the City Commission possibly relinquishing any of our oversight duties?
No.
No, not at all whatsoever.
The two major differences are the, um, the, the item of how many Commissioners can serve on the board so that the board is not a mirror image of the City Commission. And that's the purpose of reducing the number of Commissioners on the board. And the other difference is the ability for the, for B to reimburse the city on a month-to-month basis while we do that due diligence to find out whether or not the structure should stay the way it is, or whether the park should be more directly, um, or completely under the city and not part of four B, and so on and so forth. So there are no other major differences. The difference is to be able to do it on a month-to-month basis so that we can do that due diligence.
Will contracts continue to come before the City Commission for approval concerning the sports park?
Unless the structure changes, and let's say, in a, let's say that, that it was discovered that we should sell the sports park to the city, and I'm just making that up, but let's just say that were to happen, then, um, then those contracts would not go through four B, but come here. Do you follow me?
Okay.
Move to deny?
Okay, we have, um, a motion to deny, uh, item number seventeen. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who are the nays?
Uh, all those nays?
Oh.
Okay, no, those, you, you voted to deny, which is a, a motion to deny.
Oh, okay, nevermind.
So you're-
And now, so it's a motion to deny this, this, this particular item. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Four.
Okay. Now, do we have, uh, Robert's Rules of Order? Somebody help me out here. Um, does anybody have a motion to approve?
I can make a motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, consideration in action to authorize the city manager to accept a grant in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars for the Brownsville Fire Department from the Texas Department State of Health Services for the purchase of emergency medical services equipment.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, uh, this is a sixteen thou- thousand-dollar grant that we received from, uh, DISH. Uh, we're asking for your permission to accept it so we can buy a, a rescue vehicle with it.
Would it approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Lenny.
Thank you, sir.
Item nineteen, consideration in action to approve leasing of real property located at twelve fifty-four East Monroe Street to the Real Bravo Wildlife Institute.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, uh, this is a proposed lease, uh, to Real Bravo. Uh, Ramiro will make a little presentation.
Mayor, City Commission, um, the City of Brownsville, uh, the Planning Department, they bought this property under CDB. I'll just tell you a little story of the, they bought this property under CBD demolition program. Um, there was two little houses on the property. Uh, Mr. Medina and I think the planning staff at the time determined that there might be something valuable about this house, the, the front part. The back part was basically just a shack, so we demolished the shack. Um, it's been around for two, three years. Uh, about six months ago, we hired, uh, Robert Reese, the architect, to try and come up with some sort of, uh, you know, use for the building. Um, Mr. Medina had also received a grant to, uh, to create some sort of nonprofit center, uh, community engagement center with the Buena Vida neighborhood. So either way, we, um, we, we engaged, uh, Robert Reese. Uh, he came up with a, a budget for the project. He came up with a plan for the project. Um, in the end, we also needed a youth, a user. Um, uh, but when he came up with that plan, the budget was basically more than what the grant had, uh, the, more than what we have. Um, historic preservation, as you guys know, is, uh, is very expensive, and basically the cost is, is, has been elevated because it is a historic home. Uh, Robert Reese determined that, that the home is act-